Calling to order the Monday, May 19th, 2025, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henan?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Councilmember Valani?
Here.
Mayor Dean?
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The agenda has been approved. So this evening, in lieu of a mayor's moment of reflection, I am yielding the floor to Councilmember Black, who would like a moment to address council, those assembled here, and all the people live streaming this meeting. So, Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Madam Mayor, esteemed council, city manager, and residents of this city. When I was elected, I did so knowing that I am also an officer in the Army. And in that obligation, I will be leaving us in a few weeks for a deployment. I cannot say where, so please don't ask me. And what I will tell you is that it is the highest honor and responsibility, next to leading my family, is to lead the men and women of the United States Army. We are going into harm's way, and prayers are welcome. I would humbly ask, though, do not feel bad for me. This is what I'm trained for, this is what I do well, this is something that I am honored to do. And I would also say that, you know, I'm gonna deploy for nine months to a year, but the men and women of our Public Safety Department put on a uniform and deploy every day. So whatever you feel for me, please feel doubly for them, because there are two jobs that I never, ever, ever want to do and would be horrible at, and that is teaching our children and being a cop on our streets. I know that there are probably going to be a lot of questions, many of which I cannot answer now. It is my intent some way, somehow, to continue to be a contributing member of this council, but I don't have those answers as of yet. So I just wanted to let people know that this is more than likely my second-to-last council meeting. And again, please don't feel bad for me. This is, again, a, an honor, this is what we do. And my team and I are doing our job so that other soldiers can come home and be with their families. This is what we sign up for, and believe it or not, this is what we love doing. And I have to tell you, and I'm just being honest, my wife and I have four amazing, wonderfully infuriating teenagers that she gets left with. So, trust me, I think maybe I got the best end of the deal, because she gets to deal with our four teens. So, I do want to say that I understand that my wife has been doing this for 20-plus years. I won't give the number, because I always butcher it. And while she understands, please continue to think about her. I've, I'm gonna have two seniors in the fall, I'm gonna miss 70% of their senior year. So just remember, the men and women, men that do this, we don't do it by ourselves, our families do it with us. So whatever you feel for me, whatever you want to do for me, I'm gonna point you in a direction of my family. Because, again, when we deploy, we don't just deploy ourselves, our family goes with us. So, the people that care about you, they deploy with you. So, I just wanted to get that out there and say thank you. This is not gonna be an easy thing, but I look forward to being here, I look forward to coming back safely and sitting in this chair, and thank you. I'll take you.
Heck, yes.
I got a spot for you.
Heck, yes, you will. Councilmember Black, thank you for sharing, sharing that with all of us. Thank you for your service, thank you for your service here in Berkeley as well. You have my prayers, and I'll just speak for whoever else is a praying person. I believe that they will keep you and your family in their prayers. So thank you, and Godspeed, and we look forward to seeing you more before you, before you have to leave.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're so welcome. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've come to the public comments section in the beginning of the meeting. This is the opportunity for you to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. When you come to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and direct your comments to the chair. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but it doesn't mean we don't care. If your matter or concern needs follow-up from a department or city staff, I ask you to please leave your contact information on the sheet on the table just outside this door, and someone will get back with you. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being addressed and discussed. When you come to the microphone, you have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart. Somebody has to.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Attorney Mutu Veripin. I'd like to start off by thanking you for the opportunity to submit the bid proposal for legal services for the city. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I understand how these bid proposals work, and I find that it's better to put a face to the name, so that way, when you're reviewing these materials alongside my competitors and fellow attorneys, I may stick out. I'm just here to answer any questions. I do appreciate your service to our country and community. Thank you for the opportunity. I can field any questions regarding the legal bid proposal or my experience there. None? Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
Oh, God.
There we go.
We're good, alright.
Fancy new timer now.
A lot of, a lot of pressure.
Any other public comments? Alright, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, May 5th, 2025, the special work session on Monday, May 5th, 2025, and the special city council budget work sessions on Monday, April 28th, 2025, and Tuesday, April 29th, 2025. Two, warrant list, matter of approving warrant list number 1410. Three, ordinance number 0625, matter of approving the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to add Article III Workforce Housing Pilot to Chapter 114 Taxation of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to provide for approval of an exemption from and add valorum property taxes for housing being developed or rehabilitated for workforce housing for persons and families whose household income is not greater than 120% of area median income is authorized by provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of 1966, Public Act 346 of 1966, MCO 125.1401 at Seek. Four, resolution number R625, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, authorizing the decertification of local roadways. Five, motion number M3225, matter of approving the Southeastern Oakland County Public Works Association Joint and Cooperative Agreement. Six, resolution number R725, matter of approving participation in the Thai Michigan Teal Campaign to promote awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. Seven, proclamation number P1925, matter proclaiming June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Eight, proclamation number P2025, matter proclaiming June 19th, 2025 is Juneteenth Celebration Day. Nine, proclamation number P2125, matter proclaiming June 6th, 2025 is National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Black. Are there any changes or corrections, additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognizations Presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Valani to read P1925.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A proclamation of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Whereas, the city of Berkeley strives to be an exceptional place to live, work, play, learn, grow a business, raise a family. And whereas, the city of Berkeley accepts and welcomes all people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas, the city of Berkeley supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas, the city of Berkeley is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all of its residents and further preventing discrimination, harassment, and bullying based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and the expression of both facets of an individual. And whereas, while we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas, it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas, the city of Berkeley's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and non-binary identifying LGBTQIA+ community members are a vital part of our overall community and contribute it to making it a stronger one. Now therefore, the council of the city of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1, that June 2025 shall be recognized as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Berkeley. Section 2, the city of Berkeley urges the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city of Berkeley to recommit to increasing our support and recognition of the contributions made by members of the LGBTQIA+ community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice, proclaimed this 19th day of May, 2025, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council.
Thank you. I've asked Councilmember Black to read P2025.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A proclamation of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, declaring June 19th, 2025 to be Juneteenth Celebration Day. Whereas, Juneteenth is a holiday marking the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, the Senate of Michigan began recognizing Juneteenth as an official state holiday in June 2005 with the passage of PA 48 of 2005. And whereas, millions of African-Americans were captured and brought to this country as slaves in the inhumane conditions of slave ships that sailed across the Atlantic Ocean. And whereas, while approximately 11.5 million African-Americans survived the inhumane conditions, it is acknowledged that many millions of African-Americans did not survive the passage. And whereas, it is recognized that slavery then existed in this country for more than 200 years until the United States Congress passed the 13th Amendment of the Constitution, abolishing slavery throughout the country on January 31st, 1865. And whereas, Union Army General Gordon Granger arrived in Galvinson, Texas several months after the passage of the amendment, and one of his first actions was to read General Order Number 3, which stated that all slaves are free and that former masters and slaves have absolute equality of personal and property rights. And whereas, following General Granger's reading of Article, of General Order Number 3, celebrations erupted as slaves learned of their freedom, and subsequently, June 19th, Juneteenth, became the emancipation date for those long suffering for freedom. And whereas, since then, Juneteenth has been known as the oldest celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, this tradition of celebration has remained strong in recognizing the great triumph against the cruelty of slavery and honoring and respecting the strength, endurance, and immense resilience of all African-American ancestors who endured the shackles of slavery and those who preserved to see its end. And whereas, citizens must join together to acknowledge the history of slavery and the oppression which followed its ending, and to further carry forward the ideals of equality and democracy for all, regardless of a person's racial identity. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1, that June 19th, 2025, is hereby declared as Juneteenth Celebration Day in the city of Berkeley. Section 2, the city of Berkeley calls upon the community to pause and reflect on this nation's history of slavery and oppression, to celebrate the progress made thus far in ending slavery and the equal rights milestones that have followed, and to acknowledge that more progress must be made to ensure those Americans of African descent are truly free and equal as we move toward a brighter future. Proclaimed this 19th day of May, 2025, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Signed, Bridgette Dean.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M3325, matter of considering the first reading for an amendment to the planned unit development previously approved for a multifamily development on the east side of Coolidge Highway, south of Cambridge Road, and north and south of Columbia Road by the applicant Krieger Klatt Architects on behalf of WJ Ventures LLC, 2465 Columbia, 2475 Columbia, 2468 Columbia, 2476 Columbia, and 2475 Cambridge.
Is there a motion to approve M3325?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Black with support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Ms. Van Black.
I'm gonna pass this one on to our Community Development Director, Ms. Kaplansky.
Perfect.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I'm going to kind of take you through the history of the project a little bit, and then what's changed, and then the applicant has a presentation for you as well, that'll include all of the nice pictures. I'm just gonna be talking. So I'll start at the beginning. This is located on the east side of Coolidge, centered around Columbia and Cambridge. If you'll recall, in 2024, the council approved a planned unit development for this particular site. So it's currently zoned PUD. At that point, 57 units were contained in two buildings, and that was what was approved for the property, being in 2024, that was all under the old ordinance. And what we're talking about this evening was also submitted prior to the ordinance revisions. So this is under the old ordinance, too. You'll see a couple of projects trickling in that were right before the ordinance was revised. So as I said, previously, the project contained 57 units. The applicant's now proposing 51 units as part of an amendment to the existing PUD. One of the things to keep in mind when you're going through whether or not to approve this particular item is that the things that you're looking at are only the changes that were made. So we're not looking at the whole site in its entirety again, we're just looking at what's changed. And the Planning Commission did a good job of focusing on those things. The process is that the amendment to the PUD rises to the level that it has to go through the same process the original PUD did. So there's staff review, it went to the Planning Commission for a public hearing, which was noticed the same way the original PUD was noticed. The Planning Commission held the public hearing, made the recommendation, now it's here, and it would appear before the council for two readings. I'm gonna go through the proposed amendments kind of quickly. They're all detailed in page 2 of the staff report from the Community Development Department, so not the cover report, but the one that was a little bit farther in the packet. As I mentioned, all of the units have been consolidated into one building. The southern building has been eliminated, the number of units dropping from 57 to 51. You'll also notice on the southern parcel that the pocket park, that originally was closer to the residential units, has been moved up towards Coolidge and also has been enlarged. And before, it was kind of a linear park that went wrapped around a bit. Now, it's just all located closer to Coolidge. Carports have been added on the southern parcel as well as accessory structures. The look of the building has changed, the mantled roof has gone away, you can see that here. Now we have a flat top roof instead. The material composition has generally stayed the same, there has been some cement board siding added. But the main difference you'll notice is the colors have changed. So the palette is entirely different from what was proposed before, but the quality of the materials is essentially the same. The first-floor lobby has increased in size, some balconies have been adjusted and relocated to accommodate for those changes as well. The parking lot layout's been revised, the landscaping's been revised, all to fit the new layout of the site. And the parking lot in particular, I want to note, the new layout results in a lot more usable parking area, and we have the tandem spaces gone, too. So it's a much more traditional layout, provides for much better circulation. Lastly, the refuse area has been moved under the podium of the building. Now, if you'll remember, with the PUD, there are deviations from the ordinance that can be written into these agreements. There were deviations included in the previous agreement. Those were for non-residential use, not provided on the first floor, a deficient front setback on the west side, a deficient number of parking spaces, and too many compact car spaces. Those four deviations continue with this. The number of parking spaces has been decreased, but the ratio that we're coming away with for parking is the same as it was before. So the units have gone down, parking has gone down, ratio remains the 1.35 spaces per unit. There are a couple of other deviations that have been included in the amendment, and that's mainly because of the unusual nature of having one parcel, and then you have right-of-way in the middle, and then you have the other parcel associated with the project. So if that right-of-way wasn't there, we would say, you need to combine all of the parcels, and these deviations would go away. But because that right-of-way is there, that necessitated some other deviations. One is a deficient use of the southern parcel. So in the Gateway Corridor District, you cannot have a parcel that's park or parking. Those are not permitted uses. In this case, we end up with that southernmost parcel as just park and parking. So that's one deviation. Another is to have an accessory structure, the carports, located on a lot without a principal structure. And then a third, related to that right-of-way bisecting the project, is that off-street parking facilities must be located on the same parcel as the principal use. Again, the right-of-way is running through the project, so that's in there, too. The last deviation that's been added is because of the way that the roof line has changed. So previously, this was a mantled roof, if you'll recall. It's kind of that retro roof that goes down, and you have the shingles look, kind of, kind of a little bit down along the top of the roof line. That, in the zoning ordinance, is measured to the midpoint of that. If it's a flat roof, it's measured all the way to the top. So functionally, the height of the building has gone up one foot. Per the zoning ordinance, it's gone up six feet, because we're no longer measuring to the midpoint. So I want to make sure I explain that. Those are the existing and proposed new deviations. And then, the other important part of the PUD is that it meets at least three of the recognizable benefits that were outlined in the old ordinance. The new ordinance has some slightly different standards, but they are similar. And if you'll recall, the items that the council previously recognized were extensive landscaping beyond the site plan requirements of this title, the provision of open space or a public plaza, and the efficient consolidation of poorly dimensioned parcels. And when the Planning Commission reviewed this plan and recommended approval on March 18th, they found that those three things still stood, that there was consolidation of parcels on the northern half of this project, that the public plaza or open space was still provided, and that it had increased in size. And then, the extensive landscaping, they felt was met, too, particularly by the increased size of the public plaza. Now, the council has the ability to look through any of the other standards that are there, the other four, and determine those should be included as well. But what I want to emphasize is that, in looking at the changes, do they change any of the things the council previously found to be met? So that's really what you should be concentrating on, and I'm happy to go through it further if you have questions. As I mentioned, the Planning Commission held the public hearing and recommended approval. And they also found, as part of that motion, that the standards in, again, this is the old ordinance, Section 138 537, that really talks about a recognizable and material benefit to the users of the project and the city, and that the proposed project does not result in an unreasonable increase in the need or burden upon public services, facilities, streets, and utilities. They found that that standard had still been met as well. In their motion, they also asked that the applicant activate that open plaza, or public park space, a little bit. The applicant did work with me in between the council meeting and the Planning Commission meeting to add some additional pathway and things. The Planning Commission's concern mainly was that people would think that's not a space that they could use. It was a space to look at as an open grass area, so they wanted to make sure it seemed inviting. And the applicant made those changes in the plan. There is a PUD draft agreement in your packet. You'll notice there's some blanks and things, for things that would have to be filled in should you approve this evening. It would come back to you in a finalized form as part of the second reading. As I mentioned, the applicant has a presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to them, but I'm also available for any questions.
Thank you, Director Kaplansky. Before we switch, does council have any question for Director Kaplansky? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and not so much a question, just appreciation. The, you know, the interesting timing of this, between the old ordinances and zoning and the new. I appreciate you being able to kind of translate and navigate between the two of those and help us in the community understand the ways in which they're continuing to adhere to, or the questions that we'd have pertaining to both the old and then what we have set forth going forward. So I wanted to extend my appreciation to you and the team for all that work to just help us understand, as we have this little kind of like in-between zone here, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Thanks.
Councilmember Henan?
And if I could just build on that, some of the deficiencies that are listed here would be less severe under our new ordinance as compared to the old.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll just kick it off. My name is Wayne Wadika, I'm a Birmingham resident. Been doing business here in Berkeley for 34 years. Appreciate your service to the city, and want to thank you again for all you do. It's a big job every day, I know you, you don't, you never leave it, even when you're home. With me tonight is Joe Anderson, our project engineer from Giffords Webster, Ray Philios from Krieger Klatt, our new architect in the project, who has redesigned the project since our initial approval. Ray is also a Berkeley resident. Michael Ferlito, who will be our partner in development, partner on the project, and my son Wayne Wadika, our intern again for the summer. As you know, we have, we have a PUD approval, it's in place. Tonight, we're here to reintroduce to Columbia with some changes that we arrived at after the approval, after listening to the residents' concerns, going through our own internal development plans, looking at parking, looking at size and scope of the project. We came to some, what we think are very reasonable and enhancing adjustments to the project, where we're excited to present it to you today. The planning department was favorable, obviously, the Planning Commission gave us a unanimous support. We have reviewed with the PUD with the city attorney, and it's ready to be, it's approved on both sides. Our council and the city's attorney has reviewed it. So we're looking forward to presenting to you this evening. I'll be here, obviously, for questions, but I'd like to turn it over to Ray to take it from here and walk you through the specifics. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ray Phillips, Krieger Klatt Architects, and a proud 10-year Berkeley resident. So, we were brought this project, we were originally tasked with reducing the building footprint, overall gross square footage. And before I dive into the presentation, just wanted to touch on some of the things that Kristin also touched on. We reduced the buildings overall from two to one, resulted in six less units. Same parking ratio, similar setbacks, similar building height, and more green space. So this is just a brief synopsis of the new projects. Four-story multifamily building, 51 residential units, 1.35 parking ratio. We have increased the clubhouse amenity space to 1,500 square feet, and we activated 83 linear feet across Coolidge, we thought that was very important. We have a 5,400-square-foot pocket park that fronts Coolidge, that's 2,400 square feet larger than the original pocket park, and it's all in one, one area. Project location, as was mentioned, is on Coolidge, just north of 11 Mile, north of Durst Lumber. We all know the surrounding properties around the area. So this is, uh, this slide shows the original, originally approved PUD on top. And then the new proposed on the bottom. Uh, there were originally two buildings, one on the left side and one on the right side. Uh, there's a small pocket park, as was mentioned, on the south side of the building that's located on the right. Uh, and there was tandem parking spaces along with multiple one-way drives, which sometimes are hard to maneuver around. And there was minimal lobby space and street activation. You could see noted B on that top image. And uh, so we have one building, it's just on the left side there, roughly the same size. We actually increased the setbacks from the neighbors to the east. Um, as I mentioned, larger, larger lobby and larger pocket, pocket space along, along Coolidge. As we move up, you can clearly see the two buildings versus one building. Again, comparing the top, which is the previously approved PUD versus the bottom. 57 units were in the original PUD, we're now at 51. And uh, there were 28 units facing the neighbors to the east, and now there's only 21. So we thought that that was also a benefit. Uh, moving on to the rendered elevations. Um, we're using durable materials, dark red-brown brick, which I think fits in with downtown Berkeley. Cast stone window surrounds, metal siding, cement board siding. And uh, we did maintain the parking screening along all, all street-facing facades to screen those from view. Uh, this little graphic that shows building section, again, comparing the previous approval versus what we have now. And the biggest highlight here is that the overall building mass, as, as was mentioned, remained the same. Uh, the building height to the flat portion of the mansard compared to the flat portion of the flat roof only increased one foot. That's just due to the insulation on top of the roof, the slope of the roof. So the floor-to-floor heights, everything remained the same. And here we just have four bird's eye renderings that kind of plop the building on Google Earth image. So you can see the, how it fits into the surrounding, surrounding neighborhood. So here's a rendering of the front of the building. Um, we think it's a traditional-looking building with some outer cues taken from the metal siding. And then moving on to this, this is the south end. Um, you can see at the south end, the building height does, or sorry, the parapet does increase a little bit because we want to highlight both corners, uh, do full-height brick for the full, full four stories. And it kind of bookends, gives a nice picture of this building as it fronts Coolidge. And... So in closing, this is comparing the originally proposed PUD versus the, the new proposed PUD. As I mentioned, we reduced the gross square footage overall by 17,000 square feet. Uh, increased the pocket park by 2,400 square feet. And uh, we added some green space and street activation, which we think is very important. So we're here for any other additional questions you might have?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Henan.
Um, just a comment. I think this has been a great evolution. I think this is a better product than what we saw before and very pleased with this. Um, for, for our planning department, one thing I'd like us to consider, if, if we approve this and it works out where, you know, the parking is across a minor road, if for the purposes of zoning, we might consider those contiguous lots to avoid those deficiencies. You know, uh, you know, changing the zoning later if this looks to work out, you know, because there may be other opportunities where we could activate building that otherwise wouldn't be permitted because of those restrictions.
Yes, we could certainly consider that. Um, a lot of other zoning ordinances state that the parking has to be within 300 feet, let's say, of um, measured along the way that someone would normally walk, and then it can count. So we can look at those changes for sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. And thank you to, for the presentation and for the background information about this. I, I agree, I think that this is a significant step forward in the design and the aesthetics. I like the, the feel as the liaison to the DDA. I think that this would be a welcome addition to our downtown, providing appropriately, you know, um, looking building, if you will. I don't know what kind of technical term to say. It looks like it'll fit in. Um, but welcoming these additional residents to our downtown and adding to the vibrancy of, of South Coolidge, I think would be really great. So I'm encouraged by this step forward and looking forward to further conversation. Thank you.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. I too, I have enjoyed the evolution of this project and, and seeing it come to its final rendering. And um, I look forward to seeing that as part of our downtown on Coolidge. So thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. 3325.
Henan?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M. 3425, matter of approving the Berkeley Street Art Fest event on Saturday, July 12th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. On Coolidge Highway between Catalpa and Beverly. For the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, PO Box 72-1253. Approval is conditional upon submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M. 3425?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani?
Support.
With support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Ms. Van Black.
I'm going to give this over to City Clerk Victoria Mitchell to explain this event.
Yes, um, good evening. The Berkeley Street Art Fest is scheduled to take place Saturday, July 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The event application was vetted by city staff, um, all of whom provided their approvals. We did also meet with the applicant, which is Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Darlene Rothman, um, who answered all appropriate questions we had. And she, the applicant is aware reimbursement in the amount of $3,840 will be due to the city, which per our new special event policy at the time is 40% of the estimated cost of the Department of Public Services and Department of Public Safety. The, this applicant, this application and then the two applications coming after this um, are a little late to being delivered to. It is not due to the part of the applicants. We are in the process of overhauling our, our community special events, application process, um, new policy and digital application. We're hoping to get that to you for our spring/summer events. But it looks like we will need just a little bit more time. Um, the applicant Darlene Rothman is here this evening and is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Rothman.
Hi, council. Thank you for having me here. The one thing I want to amend, I think, to this, Street Art Fest is ending at four o'clock this year. It seemed like for the vendors and the businesses that, that was a request of theirs that we end an hour earlier this year, so. Um, and this has been a very successful event for the community and bringing um, public here. I mean, that's the sole purpose of us really wanting to have this event is to bring people to the community, bring people to our businesses, and uh, think about moving here, think about moving their business here. And um, it's been really great working with the community to make this all happen. All the partnerships all fold into each other. There also was, um, it's in the process of having a beer tent this year. We did it a few years ago. Um, and they're in the process of getting approval. Another way that we're looking to bring people in for different reasons, but still obviously a family-friendly event. And that would be in the um, Casamatos parking lot. So it's not something that we're doing on the street. It's going to be off on the side. So um, we're not getting into the whole district and going on the main street at this point.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Vilani.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So um, I remember, because I lived right down the block, where, the very first year of this festival. And it was, it was tiny. And I remember walking down there and it was fun, but it was, it was very small. And to see how much it has grown each year to now where we shut down the street. We have all these additional vendors. There's so much to see and do. Um, I just think it's a wonderful event that the chamber puts on to really drive people into our cities. Uh, I'm excited by how much it's grown, by the quality of the artists that we get as well. It's been exciting having David Zinn leave his art around town. His art hangs in our home as well. So uh, just kudos for what you've done with this event to keep it interesting and fresh and uh, just driving business to all of our downtown area.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. And thank you for bringing this to us again this evening. Uh, certainly we understand the procedural, you know, timing and issues and things. We're very glad that this is here now so we can help move this thing forward if we, if we should indeed support it, which I certainly will. Um, it's been fun. I remember volunteering a couple of times at some of the tables and helping out. Everybody's got a smile, it's so much fun. Procedurally, do we, uh, do we need to make an amendment to change the time to four instead of five? Or is that something that can just kind of roll along? And then secondly, would that beer tent come back to us? Or is that something that can be handled through staff?
Yes, um, if the maker of the motion wouldn't mind amending to change the time, that would be great, supporting it. Um, and the liquor application will not come before council.
Okay, it's just handled, the process through the staff, okay.
And it will be fully on private property.
Yes.
Got you, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Vilani, do you support making that change from five to four?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Perfect. And um...
All good.
All right, we're good. Councilmember Black.
Darlene is the father of an artist, an artist who is about to graduate from Berkeley High and who got into Michigan.
Woo hoo!
If her or any of the students at Berkeley High wanted to be a part of it, how would they do that?
There is a youth division up to 17, and then if they're 18, they're in the adult division. And we have a lot of students that are participating. It's all different age ranges, from student to adult, two teams. And just in, in looking at the quality of art that we have, I happened to be in Florida this year when there was a very large chalk event with, they said 600 different chalk artists. And the quality level that we have that comes here is the same quality level that is at this event with 600 artists. And I was really proud of seeing that happen because I don't get to venture to see all the other different chalk contests. And we really bring in talented. And it's, it's really started small and keeps growing. And we keep growing all different aspects to be bringing people here. I mean, the chalk is one aspect, and we keep growing it for different reasons. Um, and to keep them here for the whole day. Um, so that's, that's part of our goal.
So all of the art departments in the school district are...
They're aware of it. The problem is, is that it's during the summer. Um, because we actually, a couple of years ago, tried to do a competition between the different schools. We thought that'd be fun because one of the art teachers got involved with it one year. We just couldn't get the buy-in from the, the art teachers are off. We tried to engage with PTA parents to kind of maybe take that over. And we didn't get anywhere with that. So we, if we could get the word out to more students, and we're in conversation with the schools, it's just the timing of it being in July and, and the communication, to communicate to the students.
We just gotta turn the Wi-Fi off, so we just get all the...
Exactly, exactly.
Or get on TikTok.
But the chalk signups are, has already started. So if we can get the word out to them now, that's, that'll be great. Because we, I support the arts. We in Berkeley support the arts. And so whatever we can do to keep encouraging um, anyone of any age to be involved in the arts is part of the plan. So, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? Well, Darlene, my favorite, absolute favorite thing about this event is to see all, not only all the artists, but the families that come and they do, you know, as a group, they do something. I am not artistically inclined in this way, so it's really double fun for me to see and appreciate all the talent that's out there. So thank you, um, and we look forward to this year. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M. 3425?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Matter of approving the Berkeley Art Bash event on Saturday, June 14th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. On 12 Mile Road for the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, PO Box 72-1253. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M. 3525?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Black. Ms. Van Black.
Um, this again is going to be handled by City Clerk?
Perfect.
Yes, we have before you the, another Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce longstanding event, the Berkeley Art Bash, scheduled to take place Saturday, June 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Again, staff reviewed the application of whom provided their approval. We did meet with Ms. Rothman to answer any questions. And she is aware reimbursement in the amount of $5,600 will be due to the city, which is again 40% of the estimated event costs, um, incurred by the Department of Public Service and Department of Public Safety. And Ms. Rothman is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Darlene, come on back up.
I should have brought two jackets.
Well, this is, I think, the, one of the longest-standing events in, in the city. And um, the, what we hear from most of the businesses in Berkeley, that it's usually, or on 12 Mile, it's usually their best day, especially if they're selling things. And um, again, and it's an event that we're really bringing people to the community. It's over 10,000 people that come. And what's nice is it's, the artists keep coming back. Um, so it's a good day for them. It's usually one of the first art fairs that they're involved with in, in the summer. And year after year, the public keeps coming back. And it's affordable art. And so I think it's one that's really an endearing one that you come walking away thinking, I can afford to get something at this one. And they're eating in our restaurants and they're going into our stores. And whenever a street is closed down, we witness it all the time, is that the businesses get attention that you wouldn't get from driving by. And that's us, you know, another strong reason. Of course, I highly support the local businesses. And we strongly want the artists to have a great day. But equally so, we want the businesses that are brick and mortar to have wonderful days here. And um, it keeps growing. The footprint has grown over the years. And the, there's food vendors that come. And uh, kids zone has changed over the years. After COVID, we didn't go with like the bouncy house kind of things. Um, now we have other things going on. And it, again, attracts the public, it attracts people to come here with their kids. And they stay for a long time in Berkeley. And get to see other things that are going on throughout, so. And we encourage all of our businesses to do whatever they can to bring people inside when they're here. And they seem to be working.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Agar.
Thank you again, Your Honor, and thank you for bringing this to us as well. Congratulations on the continued success and the growth of this program. Certainly excited to support this tonight. And also, as if there was any other reason why somebody might need to come, uh, many of our local organizations will have informational booths there as well. many of our local organizations will have informational booths there as well. As the, you know, our historical committee will have a presence both at this event and at the next agenda item here coming up. And so it's a great way to shop. It's a great way to just get out and enjoy. It's a great way to learn. It's a great way to be a part of our downtown and plant those memory seeds that will grow over time. So I'm very excited about this. And thank you. Congratulations to you and the team for such an amazing event.
And one thing that we added that, it's not adding to the event, but it adds to Berkeley is we added a photography contest. And it's, photos have to be taken in Berkeley. So it's a different way for people to engage and show what areas that they love and appreciate in the community. And we like having that. And obviously, we show the photographs. I think they'll be shown in the Berkeley Library afterwards. And engages people to vote on it. But it's another way to highlight the beauty and the interesting aspects of what's going on in Berkeley. So, another form of art.
Thank you. Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. thirty-five twenty-five.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M. thirty-six twenty-five, matter of approving a downtown development authority event, Berkeley Pride Block Party on Robina, south of Twelve Mile Road, on Gardner, south of Twelve Mile Road, and in the municipal parking lot located between those two roads on Sunday, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, from one to five p.m. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event date.
Is there a motion to approve M. thirty-six twenty-five?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Valani. Ms. Van Black?
It's the night of events. City Clerk Mitchell's going to take this, and also we have our interim executive director, Jennifer Finney, for the.
Perfect.
Yes. So we have before you the Downtown Development Authority Pride Block Party, scheduled to take place Sunday, June twenty-second, from one to five p.m. All applicable staff did review the application of whom provided their approvals. We met with interim director Finney to go over the plan. She is aware reimbursement in the amount of one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars will be due to the city, which again is forty percent of the estimated costs incurred by the Department of Public Services and Department of Public Safety. And Ms. Finney is here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Finney, nice to see you.
It's nice to be here. I feel like I'm officially initiated because I've never actually had to do this, even the time for this during COVID. So. Right, yeah. So anyways, this is going to be the fourth year of Pride. I know Ash, who is a board member and a resident, and she has a great volunteer base. They came to the previous executive director, Mike, with this great idea. And I know the, it has grown since, you know, the first year. So I'm excited for all the momentum that we have with Pride for this year. We actually have our next planning committee meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, at six p.m. Wait, I'm sorry. Today's Monday. So on Wednesday, so not tomorrow, on Wednesday, in two days. Clearly, I cannot do math right now. And we had our first planning meeting about three weeks ago, and there was a lot of great volunteers, a lot of great momentum. You'll see some of the similar vendors. Mr. Baker mentioned, you know, informational booths will also be there. So anyone attending can learn more about the city, DDA, you know, different functions like that. We'll have food trucks, live music. So it's going to be a great block party.
Will you have the same DJ?
I believe we are, yes.
She's awesome.
Yes, I've heard about her. So I believe we will be having her.
Great. Okay. All right. Anything, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, no, you're okay. I'm good.
Comments or questions from council? Public comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. thirty-six twenty-five.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's regular agenda.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation regarding the twenty twenty-five twenty-six fiscal year city manager proposed budget for the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
All right, we're excited to receive this presentation. Oh.
Do I need this? Oh, you have it. Okay. Can we get that off? Thank you. Okay, good evening, council, and everyone hopefully who's watching at home, everybody in the audience. I'm excited to present the first budget. It's also, I'm here with Amy Zarowski, our deputy finance director. So Carl Johnson, our finance director, is hopping around Spain right now. He had a long-planned family vacation there, so he wasn't able to be with us tonight. But it's a perfect time to, for Amy to really help with this presentation. She's been wonderful. She was integral in the document, the wonderful document that was produced this year. So I think it's wonderful that she's able to sit up here tonight. Funny, we both are pretty new. So Amy came in November, and I started in December. And really, that's when you're, you're, you kind of want to be starting a budget process right around that time. And even earlier, when you're talking about CIP, capital improvement plan items. But alas, here we are. And so we've had a really great time putting this budget together. We started the process, like I said, not too long after both of us started. We presented city council with a draft budget April twenty-first that was also released to the public at that time. So anyone who wanted to review the draft could do so. We held work sessions with council on April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And as all of you are aware, in those sessions, we discussed many of the finer details of the budget. I'm incredibly proud of the work, the hard work and passion shown by all of our staff throughout this process, including all the time spent on creating a new budget document. So again, Amy, as well as Caitlin, took a long time trying to make sure that we could deliver the budget in a way that was easy for people or easier for people to understand and to digest. And so I think this year's budget document does a better job at telling our story. And we're hearing the feedback, and I think it's mostly good. But we also know that through time, we'll continue to refine that process. But they've just put a lot of work into really making sure that that was a document that could be highly functional for people. So anyone watching at home, if you haven't seen it, you can find it on the website. I hope that you do. Tonight's presentation will be more of an overview, just not to bore everybody. Hopefully, we find a good balance of giving good information, but not making it too long. So just remember that that document has much more information available. So if you have questions about anything that we present tonight, hopefully you can go into that document and see more. And I encourage everybody to check it out. Darlene, you didn't actually have to stay. She got called out. It's gonna be long. You might want to sit down. We're gonna start with a general overview. We'll provide some context around the different variables around the budget. And then we'll dive a little bit deeper into the recommended budget, mainly for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. So first, and hopefully, this isn't too much, but I wanted to give a little bit of a, just an overview of what taxable value is and how that relates to property tax revenue that the city receives. This can kind of be, it's a little meaty of a topic. It can be kind of heavy. So hopefully, this will be generally easy to understand. So when we talk about taxable value of an individual property, it's the amount on which a property owner pays property taxes. So the taxable value of the city as a whole is the combination of the taxable value of all properties in the city. So for us in two thousand twenty-four, we were seeing an eight hundred and twenty-two million dollar taxable value. It's all the properties in the city, their taxable values combined. Assessed value and market value are also two things that you've probably heard. Assessed value is typically fifty percent of market value. You could probably come up and give this presentation. Because, so taxable value is important and different from assessed value, mainly because of the two Michigan property, two Michigan property tax laws, which were designed to control tax burdens on community members. So the first is, actually, the second, but Proposal A is one of them. This is of nineteen ninety-four. Capse annual taxable value of properties at inflation or five percent, whichever is less. So what this does is it creates the gap that you're seeing in between in these two graphs. The gap that you're seeing between taxable value and assessed value is because as property taxes go up, and we're lucky to see that we have pretty good market values here in the city of Berkeley, and they've risen, they continue to rise at a pretty healthy rate. But what you're not seeing, or what you see, is that taxable value slowly, there's cumulatively, we see more and more of a gap between those two things, right? So that means that the city captures less tax revenue as that happens. The chart, these charts kind of showcase the difference, but it also showcases the cumulative negative effect. So this kind of showcases it. But in two thousand fourteen, we were starting to come back from the Great Recession crash. And so you'll see assessed value, as things started to get better in the economy, assessed value worked itself up pretty quickly, taxable value not so much. So it takes us a lot longer to crawl out of a hole like the Great Recession. Also with that, so what is the relation between taxable value and our property tax revenue? So one mil, taxable value equates to the money that we bring in for millages, is one mil is equal to the city's total taxable value divided by a thousand. So in two thousand eight, our taxable value was five hundred and thirty-four million dollars. That meant, that means that one mil brought in five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So when we talk about our millage rate, that's how we're finding, that's how you see how much it brings in in property tax, property tax revenue. This chart is also going to showcase a little bit more of that, the Great Recession effects that we were just, that I was just talking about. So between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twelve, taxable value slowly declined, rapidly declined, actually, over those four years. So we lost nearly a hundred million dollars in taxable value. So that means that by two thousand twelve, one mil was only worth four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Meanwhile, inflation rates and things like that, things are still increasing in cost, but we had much less, much less money to spend on. So those were some hard times for all communities. If you quickly go over to two thousand twenty-four, our taxable value luckily has increased now. And so now we're seeing about eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars per one mil. But the other state law that works in conjunction with proposal, I'm sorry, with Proposal A is the Headley Amendment of nineteen seventy-eight, and that rolls back tax rates, so our millage rates, when property values rise faster than inflation. So how does that happen? All existing property is limited by that inflation or five percent that we were talking about. But any new development, and that includes even some renovations and things like that, are not, are exceptions too. So that means that we could see a little bit, a little bit more in taxable value over and above the five percent or inflation. So then the millage rate goes, no, and it rolls back to accommodate for that. So these millages in the bottom graph, these are our millages that are subject to Headley reduction. So our operating, public safety, sanitation, and infrastructure. If we were realizing the full millage rates, that would be eighteen mils. But we, over the years, have seen decreases every year, and we're at twelve point seven. So we've lost over five mils, and that's almost a thirty percent decrease in that millage rate. So that's just to give a quick, hopefully, a relatively easy to digest, understanding of, an overview of property tax revenue. So we thought that would be a good way to just give even the public, hopefully, just a, an insight into property tax revenue and how it affects us.
All right. Thanks, Crystal, for going through the hard stuff. You gave me the easy one. So we wanted just to give everybody a pictorial representation of where our residents' tax dollars are going to. Because a lot of people think everything comes to the city and we spend all their money. But we really wanted to depict here, less than forty percent is actually coming back to us. The rest of it is being dispersed mainly to local school districts, so Berkeley and Royal Oak at thirty-five percent. And then the rest is going to Oakland County, OCC, and then a few other entities representing the remaining twenty-six percent. So.
Next. The asterisk by local school districts is because Royal Oak as well, right?
Yes.
So for anyone watching at home that's not aware, we have a very tiny little fraction of Berkeley that's Royal Oak.
Yeah, in the budget document, because there is also an asterisk in the middle one, too. It just kind of details out the differences in all of those sections.
So read the budget document. Okay, so now we're going to talk a little bit about just revenue trends over the years. We actually initially were trying to put ten years on here and then realized it was way too much. And Caitlin Flora, our communications director, was like, you need, no way, nobody can read this.
Thank you, Caitlin.
So just to look at the revenue trend over the last five years, property taxes are a main component of our revenue, as you can see here. But there are other, there are also quite a few other elements that are included. So things like our state, you'll see state grants in here, and that's largely our state revenue sharing. Licenses and permits include our marijuana licenses, building and trade permits, animal licenses. Charges for service are things like site plan review, dispatch services to other communities. Fines and forfeitures include mostly things like, mostly our traffic fines. And then there's another category, because they're just things that don't get captured, and they define it that way in the audit as well. And those include things like our public safety training reimbursement, election reimbursement, a lot of kind of odds and ends, things like that. So what we're hoping to just kind of showcase here is that our revenues have increased modestly each year, especially our property taxes. You know, we do see a slight increase each year, just like we were just talking about. But there are other, there are also these outside, often one-time funding opportunities where we'll see those hikes. So if you're looking at twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four was ARPA funds. And then you see this large hike in twenty-four, twenty-five, and that was that HVAC grant that we finally spent, that we finally completed that project. So you're going to see, when you're looking at revenue, these, and then also on the expenditure side, these kind of hikes here and there. And it's largely these kind of one-time things versus our property taxes just taking a hike up. Now, Amy has the, gets to go over an overview of how we're ending this fiscal year and then also share some information about the status of our long-term liabilities.
Thank you. So first, we just wanted to go over a little bit for the general fund, kind of where we originally started off when you guys approved the budget last year, and then where we're currently targeted to end once we get here now, less than a month and a half from now. So over on the left-hand side, you'll see what was originally approved for our budget, both revenue and expenses, was about fifteen point six million dollars. And then on the right side of that chart, you'll see where we're estimated to end up. And so on the revenue side, we're about seventeen point seven million dollars. And then on the expense side, about eighteen point three million dollars. And that's mainly due on the revenue side, as Crystal mentioned, the HVAC grant, and then additional five hundred K in property tax revenue. Just on, you know, taking conservative approach at the time that we were preparing the budget, we ended up coming five hundred thousand dollars favorable to what we had originally projected. Then on the expenditure side, you know, just as far as the revenue, the offsetting expenditures for the HVAC, and then various other minor, you know, adjustments that we needed to make throughout the year. And then I think most significantly, too, outside of the HVAC, is the three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that we were putting into the public improvement fund. Oh, whoops, sorry. Forgot about that. Thank you. Exactly. So then, kind of wrapping that up, as far as where we'll end up at the end of this year for our fund balance, about four point five million dollars. And as far as kind of a percentage of our expenditures, that's, comes in at twenty-eight percent. So as, you know, annually, we strive to aim for a minimum fund balance of twenty percent with kind of our target range at twenty-five to thirty-five with a maximum of forty. So as you can see, twenty-eight percent, we're right in line with where we want to be. So we're doing well. Next, unless Crystal wants to take this one. We wanted to run through our pension commitments over the past five years. So to highlight, we have, we have two different pension plans. On top, we have the public safety pension plan, and then in the bottom, we have our MERS pension plan, which is for our merit employees. So did want to point out, because we do have different funding sources for both of these pension plans, the public safety pension that is fully funded by the PA three forty-five, which is a separate millage outside of our operating millage. And then the MERS is specifically funded by our general and special revenue funds. Another thing, just to highlight, because obviously, there's a lot of different things that go into our contributions, kind of where our liabilities and assets are each and every year, and overall, kind of where we end up for our funding percentages. A lot of those things, and most of which are out of our control, unfortunately, is, one, how much is being contributed each year based on our extrarial evaluations, and then our return on investment. And then also another factor that I think we've been feeling a lot this past year is how many retirements we have. And then also if people are, any service credit purchases that our employees make, because those are things that are typically unknown. We can't really forecast for those. But they do have a big impact on where we sit and what our liabilities are at the end of that year. So if we go over to the top part. So if we go over to the, the top part for the Public Safety Pension, um, we're consistently contributing to the plan, but unfortunately, our funding contributions continue to increase, uh, leading to a decrease in our, our funding levels at certain times. Another factor to the fluctuation is funding levels due to decreases in investment returns that we've been experiencing, and additional retirements, as I, as I mentioned before. But we're currently at 67%, and, which exceeds the state's 60% requirement. So we continue to remain consistent with our funding levels on the Public Safety Pension. And if we move over to the MERS Pension Plan, um, we don't quite yet have the figures for 2024, MERS year-end is at December 31st, so they don't issue their report till the end of May, so we won't have those for a little bit. But as you can see, we have ranged from kind of at the low point, 49%, up to almost 58% over the past five years. As far as the funding requirements for MERS, it, we, it is 60%. We are very close and hopeful that we will get there with this current year. We also did receive a million-dollar grant in 2024, um, based off a calculation that occurred in 20, 2020, 2021, um, of all of the municipalities who were under, under the 60% funding level. But unfortunately, we didn't get that until 2024. So that will be reflected in our next, um, evaluation. So hopeful and most likely, we'll be at that 60% funding for '24. And I think that is it for there. And then next, for our OPEB commitments over the past five years, so this is our other post-employment benefits that typically includes mainly retiree health insurance, as well as life insurance, things of that nature. So here, we're in good shape as well. There's a 40% required funding level for this, and as you can see here, I mean, in 2020, 2020, we were at 31%, but now we are at 50, almost 55%. So we've grown the total assets over 2.3 million in the past five years, and, um, the city of Berkeley is well over, ahead of many other municipalities around us, um, where funding levels often fall below the 40%. So I think that's all I got for now.
All right. So now we're going to talk a little bit, speak a little bit more in-depth about this, this next year's budget. So we presented a three-year budget for forecasting purposes, I think best practice would say it helps us, um, to forecast out at least three years. It does get a little bit difficult each year that you go out to really understand, um, what you'll be dealing with, and we're making it, we're, we're basing it on our best estimates and best guesses on the information that we have at the time. But the way that you will adopt it, uh, you can only adopt, um, the next year, so you'll be officially, um, adopting 25, 26, with a projected 26, 27, 27, 28. But if you look at the budget document, it looks over three years. Um, and then next year, when we come back around, we'll be looking again at, um, 26 and 27, and then the two years after that. Okay, so this year's budget, we put together, um, we were really trying to make sure that we stuck close to the guidelines based on the strategic framework. The framework was passed by all of you in January of '25, and it provides a roadmap for, for the administration when prioritizing and strategizing the use of our tax dollars and our city resources. So this budget reflects our commitment to the objectives identified. Um, in an effort to keep this presentation relatively short, some of the more specific aspects of the budget that really showcase how we're really trying to, or how we're really working to achieve these goals, are not incorporated, but I encourage everyone to read through the budget document. Special attention is called to some of the things throughout, um, in the Goals, Priorities, and Objectives section of that document. And further, we'll be presenting the first quarterly report of the framework at the June 2nd meeting, um, where we will provide a report on our progress. So while we do believe that this, um, budget really reflects these, these pieces, um, in an effort to, as we were doing the presentation, we realized that unless we were going to get really into the nitty-gritty, we kind of stuck at this level. So we'll talk about it a little bit, but it's not as incorporated in the presentation as it is, um, when we open up the document. So we thought it would be, um, a good way to open this up for 20, for our next year's budget, for 25, 26, to look at total expenditures, um, by fund. So our full budget in all of our funds is, uh, just over $37 million. And just to look at visually, see a breakdown of that, the largest portion of that is our general fund, so just over 43%, followed by water and sewer, and then major streets, and then it gets a little bit smaller from there on. Major streets, we'll talk about this in a little bit, but is largely, um, largely funded through Act 51 money. Uh, water sewer is obviously through our water, for our utility rates, and then the general fund, we went over that, largely property taxes, but also a few other things. So this is just kind of a good visual when we're talking about it, um, all the different funds and how much, a percentage of what they, how they make up our total budget. So then this, we're looking at, this is specifically for fiscal year 25, 26, when we look at revenue by, um, by source, this is a, just this year, a more specific picture of the larger graph that we showed earlier, but 54% is property taxes, our state sources, as our rev, state revenue sharing, charges for service, I won't go through that again because I already did, but it's a good visual of just again, our, where our, um, revenue comes in, in all of the different places, and then the percentages associated. So some of the highlights for revenues this year include our, a property tax increase of 4%. I'm taking your thunder, sorry.
No worries. So Crystal just went over kind of the general fund revenue, but this gives a little bit of a hi, highlight of kind of overall, the, our large funding sources, what our assumptions were. So on a prop, property tax perspective, for 25, 26, we assumed a 4% increase overall. And then for future years, we have 3% for 26, 27, 27, 28. And then from a state revenue sharing perspective, an increase of approximately 2.5% for next year, and then our marijuana revenue sharing, we have projected at 300,000, so that includes our licenses and any other fees that we, um, received back from those licenses. So we have five licenses in total for, for next year, um, which is up three from last year, or this year that we're finishing on.
Okay, so then we look at expenditures. We broke down expenditures for these purposes by department, uh, just to give you a good look at kind of where all of the, um, where all of our costs lie. Obviously, public safety is such a critical function for us, and there, it does come with a high cost. It would be higher if we were police and fire separately, but, um, so this is just a good look at that. Active employee benefits, if you're kind of looking at this, include, uh, mostly our insurance costs, right, our health insurance costs, retiree benefits.
Infringe benefits.
Infringe benefits. Retiree benefits go back to, um, what Amy was talking about, about our, um, funding, our MERS and OPEB liabilities. So this just gets, gives a good, um, overview. Some of the kind of highlights, I guess, of our expenditures, healthcare costs continue to rise. We're self-funded, so we're a little bit more susceptible to swings one way or the other. We are assuming a 6% increase for next year. On a side note, we are looking at some creative ways, um, about how we can keep those, keep those at least steady, or even bring them down. And so hopefully, when we come back to you next year, or even before next year, we're coming to you with some of the, um, the ways in which we'd like to do that. City, some of the, like, cleanup items, um, citywide was a department within the budget. Um, we eliminated that. All expenses from there were re-appropriated to other departments based on the type of activity. That was really just kind of a cleanup that we did. Um, we obviously added a human resources department this year, so, um, you'll, you'll see some of the, um, relevant items that were associated with human resources were in the finance budget, in the city manager budget. So if you're looking at the budgets of some of these departments, you're going to see a lot of, like, fluctuations in the last couple of years, because some things have just been moved around where I think they are just more appropriate to sit, um, including a facilities department. So that was added last year, but we continued this year to align some of the costs that are related into the correct department. And then operating costs increased from about 1% to 10%, um, depending, based on current trends and high inflation rates. Um, and then the general fund revenues do equal expenditures, so we have a balanced budget. All non-operating funds will be transferred to the Public Improvement Fund for capital needs. So that's something that we're going to talk about. We did have somewhat of a surplus at the end of, a projected surplus for the end of 25, 26. And instead of letting that fall to the general fund balance, we, we feel confident about sitting with a 28% fund balance, and then starting to fund a, um, a Public Improvement Fund for our capital needs, and again, we'll talk about that, um, in a minute. So here we are. This year, we implemented an overhaul to our capital improvement plan process to ensure a thorough, well-thought-out, long-term plan to address our capital needs. In addition to that, we conducted a much-needed facilities study. Uh, this provides us the information needed to understand the long-term maintenance and life cycles of our facilities, and it has really helped us guide, to guide us in a proactive approach to strategically investing in maintenance. So that's a difference you'll see in this year's budget, than, there are larger maintenance budgets than what we have had in the past, because we have a commitment to following this facilities assessment, um, understanding what our needs are, and trying to make sure that we don't fall even further in the maintenance hole.
I just wanted to add to that real quick.
Yes.
Just to kind of piggyback off a lot of what Crystal just said, overall, the CIP process was, you know, we started that last year, kind of enhancing it, but, you know, with everything that we were doing with the enhanced budget document, we really took a lot of time, and kudos to all the department heads for providing all the, the input and, um, all the time that they did into developing what it is today in the, in the budget document. You obviously won't, you'll see clips and excerpts in here, but in the overall budget document, we really have a lot of the details of what each and every project is, a description of all of those, and that's thanks to all the department heads, and really putting time and effort into putting those together, and then consolidating, consolidating it from a finance perspective. So, and we obviously have, you know, many enhancements that we still, you know, plan on doing in the future, but did just want to shout out to the department heads for all their work there too, as well.
Yes. Okay, so a quick capital funds overview. So our capital funds, major and local streets, water, sewer, our infrastructure fund, and now our newly created Public Improvement Fund. Revenue side, we've seen a, uh, we're seeing a small increase, or we're projecting a small increase in Act 51, in Act 51 funding, so that's the main, um, main funding resource for our roads. There's, we are not proposing a change in solid waste rates for 25, 26. I think there was a typo there. And then we created a new Public Improvement Fund. Uh, it must have been when it froze on us. We created a new Public Improvement Fund, so this is probably the highlight of this. Um, we, when we were talking about our, especially being guided by the strategic framework, um, and we were talking about our needs long-term, um, it was identified that we, it would really be useful to create a fund that was set aside specifically for our capital needs that we know that we have in the future. So to strategically set those aside. And that way, we can work toward funding of large capital needs. Instead of, so we have our, um, fund balance that sits there for our emergency needs, and we keep it at a healthy percentage, and we'll continue to do that, but anything outside of that at the end of every year, and, 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 I don't want to say it like it's just a side thought, we are budgeting to make sure that there is money every year to put into the Public Improvement Fund. So the first priority is the replacement of fire engine four. It will reach the end of its useful life in, uh, '28, um, well, fiscal year '27, '28. And so the replacement of that engine is included in our CIP for '27, '28. So what you'll see is the end of this year, '24, the fiscal year '24, '25, we had a little bit of a surplus to start that fund off. So we're projecting a surplus of $315,000 to take out of general fund and put it into that fund to, to really kick it off. And then in the three years in this budget, we're projecting, um, we're estimating that we will put $250,000 a year into that. So that will give us the money that we need to fund that fire engine. We won't just stop there, though. We will continue to fund it, and then we will be looking at our needs, um, using our CIP, using our Capital Improvement Plan, to decide what the next need is and what we need to fund. Because you'll notice in the Capital Improvement Plan, there are quite a few things that we need, um, and some of those things we have to find funds for. So, um, this is just our first step in really trying to strategically ensure that we have the funds for these things, and it's not just an afterthought.
And also just to add to that, too, we spoke about the facilities assessment, which really we.
Timeout, um, council member Hannah would like to make a comment.
Yes. Yeah, I just want to make an observation. In an earlier slide you showed us this year, you know, blowing past our revenue, our expenditure projections, and, um, it's, that's not the case. It is a change in how we're saving for the future. In the past, we would have just, we know the fire truck's coming, we're saving for that, we would have kept it in the, um, in the general fund. Now we are moving it to a dedicated fund, uh, so that, uh, we don't see those vacillations in the general fund when we make those big expenditures. And so it's not that we had this giant expense that we weren't expecting, it's just a different way of accounting for it.
Correct. Yes. Council member Baker.
Thank you. Yeah, I just think of that as our piggy bank, right? So we've got the many-day fund over there, and then this is like the, you know, oh, we're going to do something cool with this someday, so we're setting the money aside. And I do appreciate the clarity that it brings, both for us as council, for staff, and for residents, to understand that, um, this is something that we value, right? I mean, the budget is an expression of our communal values, and obviously having a, having the appropriate equipment, machinery available, in this case, you know, good old truck four, right? You know, kind of a thing, is, is really important to us. I'm, I'm grateful that we have the additional visibility and transparency that this sets up, so thank you for that.
That's a good way to put it.
I think the only thing I was going to add, and we've talked about the facilities assessment, um, we all know that a lot of the buildings need updating, but that was received after we had already went through the CIP, so a lot of that stuff is not even incorporated, based on the timing of when we received that. So next year, that will be incorporated.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, when, and when, even when we talked about there are increases in the maintenance budget, there were quite a few things in the facility study that our facilities manager understood that we needed, but there are some things, as Amy said, okay, we need to figure out how we, how we incorporate these things into the future. So next year's CIP and budgeting process, we'll see even more of, of that, looking at that plan and utilizing it. So this slide, we're looking at, um, our revenues into capital. So, um, other than our Public Improvement Fund, the other large fund that we have, um, is the infrastructure millage. So this was passed in 2018, um, at two mills, it was a 10-year millage. And this is just another reflection of millage rollbacks and kind of what it, uh, what it does. So we started at two mills, and by this year, we're at 1.8. So the revenue it's bringing in, and it still brings in modestly more revenue each year because taxable values increase. But this is just a good, um, visual, I think, when we, when we, in a couple of slides, we get into what those, what we're spending. We bring in a little bit, I say a little bit, but in comparison to our capital needs, it's, you know, it's a good amount, but also you will see, and I don't want to get too ahead of ourselves, but you'll see that, um, our lead service lines are a large expense. So, um, when these, this was passed, I know I wasn't here, but, um, from what I understand, there was a plan for infrastructure needs and how this millage would really start to, would really try to, um, meet those, and then the lead service, um, kind of blew all that out of the water.
Um, council member Black has a question, comment.
Crystal, Amy, great job. So for people at home that are, that are hearing this, 350, 315,000 to kick this off. We live in an era of tariffs, of, of high prices. Will we have the ability to adjust for that, for things like that? Or are we, are we set at 250,000 a year? Or will we be able to say, hey, you know what, 250,000 in three years, given where we are with cost of materials, things like that? You know, 250 may, may not pay in three years what it pays today. So do we have that ability to say, you know what, it needs to be 350 or 4? Can you kind of speak to that a little bit for people at home?
First, I'll start with, specifically with the fire truck. If you guys pass this budget tonight, we are ordering it tomorrow. So we, we lock a price in for that, but to your point, um, yeah, things change. We are hoping, we do budget pretty conservatively. Um, I, I would argue that that is a best practice, but that gives us, hopefully, the hope is that this isn't the only year that you'll see us say, oh, we have a little bit more in tax revenue than we thought, because we wanted to ensure. That's where we can have the discussions of how we spend that each year, so we can put a little bit more into our, um, and, and honestly, those conversations, um, we have those as we're looking at the CIP, and then our recommendations come to you through us taking a look at our needs and our resources, and then figuring out the best way to achieve those. So if we do see things rapidly increasing, and we start to go, so after the fire truck is, is paid for, and we're thinking about the next thing that comes from that Public Improvement Fund, um, we have to come up with a strategy of how we're going to fund it. So we may be coming to you next year and saying, we need to increase that 250 to 300, just based on, um, and here's how we plan to do that, um, whether it's increased revenue that we're finding, or we're pulling back in some areas, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
And to your point as well, I mean, today, we just got an email about the fire truck, where originally, we didn't get that.
We don't need bad news yet. No, it's the same price, but it's just, they're kind of adjusting their timing. Yeah. So we have, we have asked them to lock their price in, and they, they gave us a timeline of which they could do that.
Mayor Portman. Great, thank you very much. Uh, was wondering if, uh, you might just be able to give, without having to do like back-of-the-napkin math, uh, could you, uh, give kind of residents an idea of what, uh, amount of money might have come in had it not been for the rollback each year for the specific? I think it's important to put into context how much money actually, um, we didn't have coming in because of the rollback each year.
Yeah. Yeah, um, off, because I'm not that great at math in my head, I could, I cannot give you that, but we could probably produce that in a chart and bring it to you later. Because there is some money that's been significantly, significant money that's been left on the table for all the villages, really.
Yeah, I think it's helpful context, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should do it for all the villages then.
And I'd just like to observe that we actually never captured the full two percent. It rolled back even before we got the first payment.
That's a good point. It happens a lot when you pass villages, that you pass it at this and then it rolls back before it even hits the books.
Councilmember Valani.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and kind of like piggybacking off of Councilmember Gavin's question, also, we know that when there's less money, decisions have to be made about budgets, whether it's for capital improvement, for services to residents, so whether it's when you produce those numbers, or if there's anything that you could also comment on now, because I'm sure many of our residents out there are saying, oh, things are fine, you know, we pay enough in taxes, you know, the streets are clean, all of that, but can you add a little bit of color to like what we're losing out, when we're losing out on those dollars as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I can say, we are very lucky to be sitting here today because several years ago, all of you made very, some very hard decisions and some very hard cuts. So, the budget is looking good right now, we're in a good position. Had those cuts not been made, we would not be in the position that we're in. We could not put money away for, for a fire truck. So, so yes, there were cuts made exactly for that reason, because these millage rollbacks over the years have caused, you know, we see an increase if we went back, I don't want to throw us too off, but if you, you, we see an increase in our revenue each year, but you have to, also our costs increase, right? Wages increase, the cost of materials increase, we're going to talk about that in a minute, actually. So, even though we're seeing a modest increase every year, that doesn't always, yeah, offset the, the cost increases that we're seeing. So, so then we have to start seeing cuts and start doing things, making decisions based on what we have available to us.
Thank you for acknowledging that. I'm in, I can tell you that this council took that very seriously. It was a very, very difficult moment to be in, and I'm proud of the, the work that we did, and I'm grateful now to be in this moment. It's never easy, but none of us wanted anyone to lose their jobs, so a reduction in services, et cetera, was, we thought, a more palpable or palatable way to go. And so I'm grateful that we are realizing the benefits of that. So, thank you.
Okay, so, Amy.
All right. So the next few slides just kind of give us an overview of all of our capital improvements, and we have sliced and diced it in a couple different ways, just so that you guys can get a better understanding of how we went, how we approached this and what we're actually doing with all the, all the funds and all the capital improvements. So, the chart on the left, that actually gives you the three years of the budget that we're going through today and approving, but then the pie chart on the right is actually only for twenty-five, twenty-six. And so, if you're looking at the broader CIP, which is our six-plus year overview, you will, you will see that, oh, actually, it's, that comment is for my next slide, sorry. I got ahead of myself. This one is by type, so we have here, you'll see the bulk of our spending is fifty-seven percent in roads. Obviously, kind of a no-brainer, that's what we're, the bulk of what we're, what we're doing each and every year. Then, next, it would be our water distribution projects and programs, followed by our storm sewer and drainage projects, and then kind of the top items all kind of fall three percent. So for our parks and rec building and building property, vehicles, and then machinery and equipment. And a couple slides from now, you'll kind of see the breakdown of what's in kind of some of these different categories. And here is the one that I got ahead of myself. This is the breakout of same thing, you know, on, on the, the left, the chart, and then the pie chart is twenty-five, twenty-six, but this breaks it out by fund. So, over here, overall, for twenty-five, twenty-six, the total budget is six point two million, and so that is broken down, if we look at it by fund. The water and sewer fund, that represents about thirty-six percent, and then the major and local street funds, that comprises thirty-two percent, and then we go over to the infrastructure millage, which is twenty-two, and then general fund is about seven percent, so kind of a small piece of the pie, and then recreation revolving is two percent, and solid waste is about one percent. Anything else, Ed?
Um, just in, we'll talk about this in a minute, but just when, as this is up here, I think it's a good, good thing to understand that we are, while we are spending what looks like quite a bit of money and we have quite a bit of money coming in, to put it into context, we are not even touching what we need to be doing. So when it comes to our road infrastructure, when it comes to our water and sewer infrastructure, we're doing everything that we can with the funds that we have available, and it can look like quite a bit when you're looking at it up here on the screen, but the needs far, far exceed what we can, can actually do. And we'll, so we'll get a little bit in depth about that in a few slides, but just while this is up here, I think it's, it's important to know.
All right, and then just to get into kind of details of what represents, what projects and programs that we're working on for next year, from a general fund perspective, looking to get access control cameras for all the different buildings, our annual water line replacement pro, replacement road paving project, which I think does not belong there. Sorry about that. Then there's three vehicles that we'll be getting to our public safety and one in City Hall, and then some various different equipment, a mower and a trailer, and then the major street and infrastructure fund, that is mainly comprised of the Bacon Avenue Water Main and Paving Project, and then Recreation Revolving Fund, we are looking to upgrade the COM-1 concession stands, and then also the community center bathrooms. And then for Solid Wastes Fund, we're going to be purchasing a new brush chipper, and then the Water and Sewer Fund, our kind of annual sewer line replacement and road paving projects, also the annual water meter replacements, and there, we're going to be acquiring one new vehicle, and then also, I think, one of the, the things that definitely will be great for all of our, the DBW as well as our residents, is the Neptune Gateway System, where it, once this is installed, the city, us here as well as the residents, will be able to remotely access information about their current and past water meter ratings. So, I think that'll be a great, you know, addition to our, our residents. And then as far as kind of on the left side, this just kind of tells you where for each fund, these, the sources, the revenue sources that are going to be utilized to fund all of these projects, so from a general fund perspective, it's our property taxes, our state share of revenue, our charges for services, and then special revenue and capital improvement funds are utilizing state grants, property taxes, and user fees. And then from an enterprise fund perspective, it's our water and sewer fees that are collected for capital-related items.
So I think with the typo, and sorry, I was just taking a look at this, I think with the typo in general fund, what we're missing is the lead service line replacement as well. So is that is, so what that, kind of what that's saying is, the lead service line replacement comes from largely from infrastructure, is that correct? And then when you look at our major street and water, what we try to do is when we're looking at, and Sean can speak to this a lot better than I can, but I will try, when we, when we are looking at a road project, we're looking at the, all, all the infrastructure that needs to be replaced with it is, because why dig up a road if you're not going to also hit the, the water main while you're in there? And then obviously, we have this continuous lead line replacement. So, when you look at it in the CIP document, you'll see bacon is the next one, is up, is up for the next two years, and while doing that, we are hitting all the lead service lines that are, that are included in that. That is separate from the one million dollars in lead service line replacement that's happening throughout the city, but while we're going in there, Sean obviously said, well, he's just a very smart man, so he knows we're going to do that while we're down there. So you'll see if you're looking at the CIP, that it, those types of projects are across our water sewer and our road funds and infrastructure, because we need all of it to, to, to fulfill that whole project.
Councilmember Black.
Yeah, and this might be a Sean question, but for people at home, will probably eventually get the, you know, we're going to get, why bacon? So Sean may be interested in that.
We picked bacon, it was, the scoring criteria is no longer just roads. It used to be roads, and then it was roads and water main, and now it's roads, water main, amount of lead services, have all their utilities replaced, or like consumers, have they replaced the gas mains in the area. Bacon kind of rose to the top, we put all those into the equation. We had a rash of main breaks, I think we had five in one night on one block. We can't, we can't survive those. So that was, really brought that one to the top. Thank you.
Okay, you might not want to go too far. Yeah, just kidding. So, go ahead, Amy, I think you're taking this one. So this is about our, the investments that we're making in the, and through our capital funds, just taking a little bit of a deeper dive. We gave you guys the, the kind of ten-thousand-foot view, we got into it a little bit, but this gives a little bit more context.
So as, as far as our annual water main and road coordination, you know, typically, about a half a mile of water main replacement occurs each and every year, and again, to kind of both their points, those road projects are done in conjunction with, with larger water main projects. Sewer lining, about six hundred thousand dollar annually goes into those projects to struct, to structurally align several sections of combined sewer systems, and utilizing more cost-effective and less intrusive than other physical evacuation, excavation. I can read. And then about fifty, fifty percent of the system has been lined over the past twenty years. And then our current rate of water main and road replacement is about every a hundred years bef, or it will be a hundred years before every pipe and road segment has been replaced.
So that just, I think, speaks to what we were talking about earlier, that our needs far exceed what we have available to us, because those roads don't have a hundred years in them.
No.
Which leads to the next slide, so the state of our utilities. Okay, so three hundred lead service line replacements to date. This includes discovery and replacement costs, so the verification process will continue until all services are confirmed, and we believe that this process could take over twenty years. So we believe, based on the information that we have, that we have roughly fifteen-hundred services left for replacement. The problem is, is we can't really verify that until somebody's actually in there looking at it. So, I believe, and Sean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we look at things like how old the house is, and if we have any records that showcase whether or not they have a lead, lead service line. And there are some records that show us that, but a lot of it is guesswork. Is that?
Correct.
Did I miss anything?
Maybe a little bit.
So, a big hurdle with the lead service line replacements, it's, there can be different types of service materials. So what we see in the house isn't always what we're going to see out by the curb stop, which is by the sidewalk or in the road. So we try and use the records we have that are very old to correlate age of the house, the records we have, physical inspections on the inside, it's going to catch the majority of them, but a lot of them, they actually take a physical excavation outside to confirm what the material is. And right now, we have over five thousand services that are in the unknown category. Where we take that information, we really can't say for certainty what it is, we can do our best guess, but is that enough to make a homeowner comfortable that they do not have any lead or service?
Sean, what does a physical excavation cost a city? Ballpark?
Ballpark, you're in the twelve-hundred dollar range, twelve to fifteen-hundred dollar range per home. And that's if you're doing them en masse. A one-off is much more expensive, but if you're going out this week, I'm going to do all verification work, it's twelve to fifteen hundred dollars per, per service, not including admin time, and that's for the physical. You still have to do the internal inspection, which we have a portal where residents can self-report that, they can go online, take pictures, report it in, we'll verify if we can see it, if not, we'll send someone to the home to check it out for them. Thank you.
So Sean, sorry, when we talk about, so we're trying to invest one million dollars a year in this, so how many service lines is that getting us roughly?
Right around a hundred.
Right around a hundred, so.
Our average is about ten thousand per service, and a lot of that is restoration fees because the water main is under the road, it's physically under the road, so you have four to five thousand dollars in costs, just-
Okay, so that's in addition to the twelve hun, when you talk about twelve hundred.
All that's included in that.
Okay, okay. So this is an unfunded mandate, this is something that was brought down by, well, the Michigan deadline right now is twenty forty, but, and the federal deadline is twenty thirty-four, and we believe that Michigan may adapt the federal, the federal timeline.
They have a choice.
So, so that's not that long away, that's not that far away. So, the costs of this are really limiting our ability to dress, address some of the other critical needs in the community, so that's a million dollars a year that could be going to, towards more roads and more of our other, of our more significant water main projects, water and sewer main, sewer line projects. So we are, we continue to pursue other avenues for funding, where we currently have a request out to our state and federal government for assistance with this, but there have been grants out there, and they typically go to some of the more overburdened communities, of which we are not considered one, so that's actually been a, I guess, an issue for us.
And I'd just like to add that in addition to that unfunded mandate, it's the lack of revenue sharing too, that has greatly negatively affected not only Berkeley but other municipalities, so it's kind of, you know, and the hits keep coming, so.
Yes. A little bit more context to these expenditures is, and this really speaks to our buying power. So, we were looking up some statistics that could really, we could really get behind with this. The Michigan Highway Construction Cost Index is something you, done through the, through the state. They estimate that construction costs in Michigan have increased forty-nine percent since twenty fifteen, and twenty-six point four just since twenty twenty. So prior to twenty twenty, MDOT traditionally assumed a four percent increase annually, so if you just do the math on that four percent increase annually, when over the te, past ten years, we've seen a fifty percent increase. And then even worse news for us is that increase has been even more severe in the Metro Detroit area. So that map to the, to the side of the screen shows the percentage across the state, and so for us, that looks like a sixty-three percent increase since twenty fifteen. So the costs of these projects are significantly increasing while our funding is stagnant or we receive even more unfunded mandates.
Thank you. I'm curious about the, the Metro Detroit area versus the rest of the state, is that because of density perhaps, or the age of the infrastructure? I'm just curious of the, if we know the why for that.
I believe, and I, and Sean, you may be able to add some context to it, that it's even more higher demand.
Yeah, demand and density and age, yeah.
I think it's a, a little of everything. You know, Metro Detroit areas, older communities, a lot of older homes, a lot of tighter spaces, more road network in a dense area. You get out further north, it's a tooling road, asphalt, the mill and overlay, there's not much there, there's not, you don't have other grades to match, you don't have existing homeowners there that maybe you have to deal with.
Larger complexity of the project.
Yeah, much more complex in a dense area.
Thank you, yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with analogous issues from, you know, the electric side of the house, with the density and the age of the equipment, and, yeah, all of that good stuff, so.
Okay, so that takes us into our water and sewer rate change. So I believe, so no change in our fixed rates this year, but from my understanding, in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget process, it was discussed at that time that some increases, specifically for the water service and the sewer service, we're going to have to increase around ten percent each year to keep up with costs. So, I want to explain this a little bit, because these are the, these things all pay, you'll see all of these things in your water and sewer bill, or your utility bill. The water service variable, the sewer service variable, so your water, your sewer, and then there are some fixed rates. So you're ready to serve, and that's like the administrative side of things, and ready ser, ready to serve sewer. Those flat rates are not changing at all. So while we are seeing a ten percent increase in the water service, and then a, almost ten percent increase in sewer, it all, it only equates to a two point nine four increase of the bill itself, because those flat fees are really what take up so much of it. And so these increases are, are being used to cover the increases that we're seeing from our providers, as well as the maintenance of our infrastructure, which we just talked about, is, is, is only increasing in costs. And we also are trying to address the fact that, I, I believe last year, when Nate and Carl were up here, they talked about the, the very low amount of money that was sitting in the water and sewer fund, available if something were to happen. So best practice would say you should have some reserves set aside in case there is, I'm sure you've seen in the news, things like sinkholes, big problems, again, we're in an old community with a lot of old infrastructure, and while we are trying to do our best to keep it up, things can happen, and if you don't have the funds available to pay when the, to pay for it when those things happen, it's even more expensive. So, in addition, we are, so what we are trying to do is put a little bit of money aside, keep a little bit of money aside, I say a little bit, but hopefully we can see that grow, just so that we have the money available should something- I say a little bit, but hopefully we can see that grow, um, just so that we have the money available should something happen. But also to continue maintaining our infrastructure and then paying our service providers and that cost just continues to increase as well.
And the, um, the rate increases that we're seeing, um, are largely going towards lead line replacements. But, uh, even if we wanted to spend them outside of the water fund, we can't. They can only be spent on water-related projects.
That's correct. It's a enterprise, enterprise fund, so, I don't know, Amy, you want to hit on that, but can you repeat that? It can only be spent, so an enterprise fund, the, the funds that go into it can only be spent on.
Specific items.
We cannot use water fund money for some other project.
Correct. All right, so Amy's going to talk a little bit about, so this is the, the, similar to your tax bill, your utility bill.
Yep, so we just kind of wanted to do the same thing. Visual representation of where our residence, uh, utility bill dollar is going. So, the, I'll just kind of highlight the top three, um, is basically your infrastructure repairs and maintenance, excuse me, and then stormwater changes, charges. And then the, the next highest is 17.9% for your operational or administrative costs.
This is just a good breakdown of kind of where the bill goes. Okay, um, so to conclude, um, we believe this budget showcases our commitment to achieving our priorities through an allocation of resources to invest in our infrastructure, including a focus on putting funds aside for capital expenditures and emergency repairs and maintenance. Continued investment in our pension liabilities, investments in our staff, leveraging outside funding where we can, and investment in long-term planning efforts. So, um, again, the budget document itself gives a lot more detail on some of those long-term planning efforts, but I'll just throw some out there. Some of the things that you'll see in the budget include an economic development study, um, an update to our parks and recreation master plan. So, there are things in there, um, interesting things that are not necessarily included, um, in this presentation tonight, but we took quite a bit of time as it was, so we were trying to scale it down. Um, but I am proud to present the budget. I feel that it strikes a balance between a strategic allocation of our resources, um, in our operations, as well as a vital focus in the investment in our infrastructure and in our facilities and in our people. Questions?
Thank you, yes. Any further comments or questions from council?
That's me, thank you again. Uh, thank you, this has been a very informative and, and insightful into, again, not only how we're looking at the funds, but the ways in which this will be allocated uh, as a step forward with our three-year plan as well. I know, I noticed you jotted down a few little corrections and things, you were going to tweet to the, um, materials. Uh, when might the public, uh, expect to see the tech that we just walked through available, uh, with those minor corrections added?
So, we were, I was kind of going back and forth on this. I feel like sometimes, I don't mind putting the presentation out there. Contextually though, I think it's really, I, I encourage them to watch this presentation. Because if you're just reading the PowerPoint itself, we tried to keep it, you know, not having the PowerPoints that had all the words on it. But when you're just reading it alone, it can be really difficult to interpret that information or understand what you're looking at. Um, so we can put it out there, but I would really encourage everyone to, to find the link to this presentation and watch it with the presentation.
Yep, to, to that point, maybe as part of the document, you could add the link to the YouTube thing or something to say, here, click here and then.
Yeah, watch me.
Follow along, yeah, you could have the little bell that rings when it tells you to turn the page. You know those things? Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Power records, yeah, those are power records.
Councilmember Henan? Yeah, I just wanted to commend you and all the staff for the excellent product this year, um, especially coming in when, after you should have already started on it. So, you know, it's really appreciated and, which gives me great faith on how much better it is even going to be next year. You know, all my question has been answered. You know, it's in large part, both because we've had the extensive budget hearings before, um, uh, but also just the excellent presentation and narrative of the writing here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, before you take your seats, I just want to, again, um, and I said this during budget work sessions, really appreciate all the work that not only the finance department, city manager, but all the departments. Every year we see the budget, it, it is truly a, a living document and it reflects the priorities and the values of our community. And I joke all the time, like, uh, but it, it really, it just gets better all the time. And I appreciate the creative ways, um, not only that you're laying this out, but in terms of funding, what you're looking at and, um, how we can meet the needs. It's kind of like, you know, I have to feed 10 people and I have a pound of hamburger. How are we going to do that? And so, that really leads, I think, to some creativity and I appreciate that, um, directors and city manager are taking that um, and running with it in, in any way that, hey, if this is available to us, let's apply for that, let's apply for that. And so, um, I also like the reorganization, um, that has happened in the budget. I think it makes more sense how we're allocating money, what funds we're putting it into, um, because it also then reflects the goals and priorities and our strategic framework that we worked hard on council as well as departments and staff. So, I mean, this is truly to me, um, the most evolved budget that has been before us and to the, um, I believe councilmember Henan's point, it will just continue to get better. And that is encouraging and, and makes me happy, so thank you so much.
To that note, if I can just add, A, if you have whatever comments you have to help us refine it for next year, we are all ears. Because it's, it's, you know, we're, we're newer, we're trying, we, we feel like we have a good understanding of what, um, of how it should be presented, but it always needs refinement, right? Um, and then also just want to add that we did come in here pretty fresh, but the reason, largely the reason, um, that you're receiving such a great documents because we came into a wonderful, a wonderful group of people who have all of the, um, the historical information for us. They came with their ideas and their thought processes of how they think things could improve. It's, it's, you know, I don't want me and Amy get to stand up here and present this, but it's really a product of all the staff that were already here. Um, we went through many meetings, we met with all the staff, um, I'm sorry, we met with all of the departments in lengthy meetings to talk over their aspects, their pieces of the budget and their thoughts and ideas. So, so while the two of us get to, to come up here and present it, um, it's, it's, some of the people that you see, well, a lot of the people that you see in this room and some that you don't, who we are blessed to have come into, um, knowledge base and some passionate and very, um, articulate and thoughtful employees here, so.
Well, and I think you've given them the opportunity as well. You know, you're calling them to their best, you're allowing them to have input and treating their opinions with, um, respect and, and how, that they matter. And so, people will rise to the occasion, so thank you for your leadership on that.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Sure. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's regular agenda.
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the city manager proposed 2025, '26 fiscal year budget in supporting tax rates for the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
Okay, I'm opening the public hearing at 8:58 PM. Seeing no member of the public here wishing to comment, I am closing the public hearing at 8:58 PM. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number eight on tonight's regular agenda.
Resolution number R-825, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, approving the 2025, '26 through 2030, '31 capital improvement plan of the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve R-0825?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin with support from Councilmember Valani. Ms. Van Vleek?
Um, so this is, is just one of the aspects of the budget. Um, this is our capital improvement plan and the Planning and Enabling Act of the State of Michigan requires the city to prepare and approve a six-year CIP plan as part of the annual budget. So, we just discussed some aspects of it, but if you want to see it in its entirety, it's part of the budget document, it goes out for six years. Um, the items in the, those items were, I'm sorry, the CIP was discussed, um, quite a bit in length in our April 28th and 29th meetings. Um, that's really the beginning of the budget process also, not the April 28th and 29th, but the CIP itself, um, and really building that up. And, and actually, staff are already working on their, kind of that background information that Amy was talking about. Staff has access to the forms that have been created by finance and they're already getting going on, on next year's. So, we will continue to, um, provide even more contextual information so, to, for those CIP items. The plan was submitted to the planning commission and discussed at their meeting on April 22nd, um, and Director Kaplansky presented that to them. Um, the items in the CIP plan for fiscal year '25 and '26 are all incorporated into the proposed budget. The '27, '20, '26, '27, '27, '28 are in the budget, but the, the years out after that are not actually for approval in the budget process. Um, but they are for approval in the CIP as is, as we are planning them. Um, you'll also see, um, that there's quite a bit of funding that's necessary and so it's really our call to action for finding the funding for those things. Um, so our recommendation to you is approval of the six-year CIP for the fiscal years '25, '26 through 2020, 2031 totaling $46,276,543.
Thank you. Deputy Director Zeroski, do you want to add anything? Not, not that that wasn't a pretty robust, uh, number and, and, uh, years out plan, but.
Uh, I don't think I have anything else.
Did I cover it?
Yes.
Just making sure.
Thank you.
The CIP also, I'm sorry, is a, uh, if for anyone watching at home, is also, um, within the, um, packet. Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, terrific work, uh, on this as well. I like how it really charts a longer-term course so we can kind of really see where we're headed with the bigger projects. And if, if I recall, you mentioned earlier that this was largely put together before we had the facilities assessment, right? So, we might, uh, as that information is more fully digested and incorporated into future plans, uh, we may see, uh, you know, some different kinds of numbers.
Yes.
Based on the decisions that we as a community make on to what extent we value these public buildings and the ability to provide quality service.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, I'm pleased to see we finally got into a proper CIP that's, uh, has realistic projections over six years, um, more than just a wish list after the first year or two and, and properly prioritized too, uh, so that if we do have to make choices on what needs pulled, that work has sort of already been done on, on what would be the first things to come off.
Okay. Public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R-0825.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number nine on tonight's regular agenda.
Resolution number R-925, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, setting the residential and commercial service fee for the collection and disposal of solid waste effective July 1st, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve R-0925?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Valani. Ms. Van Vleek?
So, um, in order to pay our, um, solid waste collection, we have a, um, we have a millage, a sanitation millage, but we also have this fee that's established by all of you. Um, and it really should be established each year with the budget and re, and reestablished. This year, we are not proposing an increase. Um, we are experiencing, um, a percentage increase from our, or for the costs, for those disposal costs. Um, but we feel confident with the fund as it, as it sits right now that we don't need to pass the service fee charge, an increased service fee charge onto the residents. And so, we will bring this back to you again for next year's budget and we will, we will reevaluate those numbers at that point and then, and then decide whether or not to recommend whether or not that fee needs to be increased again. But this year, we're recommending, um, no fee increase.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, just an observation, again, that the reason for the tax and the fee is largely because the tax has rolled back in half.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. So, the tax itself could never, um, fund our fee, or fund the cost for those services.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R-0925.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number 10 on tonight's regular agenda.
Resolution number R-1025, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, setting the various rates for water and sewer services effective July 1st, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve R-1025?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Ms. Van Vleek?
So, this is for our water and, uh, water and sewer rates. We talked about it, um, in the presentation, but, uh, this is, there needs to be a separate, um, resolution specifically for these rates. So, um, as we talked about in the presentation, they are set annually and as part of a multi-year plan that was discussed prior to us being here, um, the variable rates were, there had been a discussion at that time that the variable rates, and the variable rates meaning not those flat fees, but the variable for water and the variable for sewer, we're going to need to see an increase for the next few years just to keep in line with the increases that were being passed on to us um, from Southeast Oakland County Water Authority and Oakland County for sewage and stormwater, um, and this goes back to GLEWA. The budget includes significant capital costs, um, related to unfunded mandates by the state, which we also discussed. And that's looking at, we were putting at least 1 million into that annually. The budget is assuming a six to eight, in, six to eight percent increase in costs increases for water purchases and sewage and stormwater disposal and processing. Um, so these proposed rates are unchanged for all fees except for the consumption charges, which were increased 10% for, um, um, water and sewer. So, again, those flat rates are not being touched. Um, the proposed rates are the minimum amounts needed to cover operating costs, debt, and a small portion of the capital requirements in the water and sewer fund for fiscal year '25, '26. The reason we say small portion is because, again, a large amount is going towards, um, lead, lead service lines. But also, if we were doing the work that really needed to be done in the city, it would be much more than it is here. The water and sewer fund had a cash balance of just $73,000 at the end of Ju- June 30, '24. Um, and an estimated balance, and what we're looking at at the end of '25 is an estimated balance of 675. So, this is speaking to what we were looking at, really trying to get a fund in there, um, because things can happen. And if we're caught without money to fund those things, it means we would have to go out and finance some things, which costs a lot, quite a bit more money. Um, so tonight, we are recommending approval of the attached resolution for water and sewer, sewer service fees beginning July 1st, 2025, in conjunction with the amounts assumed in the proposed '25, '26 water and sewer fund budget.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R-1025.
Henan?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number 11 on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M-3725, matter of receiving updates to the city of Berkeley fee schedule.
Is there a motion to approve M-3725?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan with support from Councilmember Black. Ms. Van Black?
Um, okay, so this is, the, obviously the fee schedule was just in front of you guys as we were cleaning some things up. Um, that was a little bit abnormal. What you're going to see going forward is that we bring the fee schedule in front of you during budget time. So, at that point in time, department directors have taken a look at their fees, um, they've analyzed them to see on, on various things. Are they, are they covering our costs? Are they in line with other communities? Are they covering what they're supposed to cover? Um, and so there have been some minor adjustments, um, since the, the adjustments that were made earlier. I also want to just make sure I make it known, we can make amendments throughout the year as needed as well. So, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we cannot make changes, um, but I think it's just a good process to bring it in front of you during budget as we're looking at everything. But throughout the year, if things change and we see that we need to make some fee changes, we'll bring it in front of you because you guys should be passing all the fees that are associated with things here in the city. So, um. Victoria, do you want to, I'm sorry, did you want to go over any of these? Um, there's a few minor things.
Yeah, sure, a few minor things. Um, changes to the fee schedule by the city clerk's office, um, cleanup, we deleted a $200 cleanup bond um, under the application for community special event, that's no longer charged by the community development department. We added a document recording fee of $30 that the clerk's office is now recording all the deeds, um, with the county. And a larger change would be, we did change the fee for the 90-day, um, solicitation fee, individual ice cream peddler license and cruise fast individual license. We increased it, um, we did double the fee from 25 to $50, um, but we did an audit of all the surrounding communities. surrounding communities and we were undercharging. So we feel that to properly compensate for the Clerk's Office time and the Department of Public Safety, we did need to raise that fee. And also, we want to make sure that Berkeley's commitment to ensuring reputable vendors are sending peddlers out to the neighborhoods. Also, the Community Development Department, they had some cleanup in the fee schedule and then they did add the fee for temporary sign permits per the updated zoning ordinance.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate your being mindful and paying attention to those things because as we've seen, things, you know, years go by and all of a sudden you're like, whoa, wait a minute.
And Victoria's been wonderful, by the way.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, for the people at home, we are by law not able to make a profit on the fees. We're only able to charge what it costs us to administer, or oftentimes less than what it actually costs us, but this is not a profit center for the city.
No, thank you for pointing that out. Councilmember Black?
Yeah, so, it's a lot of lemonade stands this time of year, so Ms. Mitchell, I want you to squeeze these children for every dime of this $50, and I'm going to enjoy calling them peddlers from now on. So I love this fee schedule. It's a great job. It's great.
I hope those little kids selling lemonade are not watching. It's probably safe to say they're not.
Safe to.
I feel confident they're not. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. 3725.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number 12 on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R. 1125, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year '25, '26, and acknowledgement of the '20, '26, '27, and '20, '27, '28 budget projections.
Is there a motion to approve R. 1125?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Ms. Van Vleek.
Okay, so this just wraps up, I guess, the budget presentation. I won't go through all of the bullet points because we talked a lot about it during, in the presentation itself, but this includes the millage rates, which are all seeing some rollbacks due to what we discussed earlier. And it, just want to highlight that we did put out a draft budget on April 21st when we met on the 28th and 29th. There were no significant changes that were made by council to the budget itself, but there were some changes to the document. There were some minor things here and there that we changed, so we will be publishing a revised document, a final document to that. But as far as changes, those were all, none of them were contextual or number-based in any way. And, yeah, I think so we're just asking for approval of the two resolutions included in the budget document. The first is the adoption of the millage rates and the second is the adoption of the budget, including the acknowledgement of fiscal years '26 and '27, and '27 and '28 as projections.
Thank you. So, just to clarify, none of the numbers changed, but other suggestions that were made during those work sessions?
Correct, yes, and some typos as well. There were some things, some graphs in there that we found had done some weird things. So you'll see changes, you may see changes in numbers, but not because they were changed by council-
Got it.
-but because we found some errors in the first document.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Any public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R. 1125.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number 13, our final item on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M. 3825, matter of approving the terms of the Second Amendment to the city's ground lease agreement with AT&amp;T.
Is there a motion to approve M. 3825?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan with support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Ms. Van Vleek. I know you have worked on this very hard, very consistently and...
Yes. So the city has had a ground lease with AT&amp;T since 2004 for a cell tower that's located near the community center. If you're, if you're looking at the community center and you're looking south towards Comm. 1, it's right near, it's right near Comm. 1, so if you've never noticed it, maybe now you will. But we've had that ground lease since 2004. The lease runs through 2029, but AT&amp;T reached out to discuss the terms around renewal early as they're analyzing their inventory of infrastructure against their needs and new technology. So, I've been doing some research about this and just kind of trying to make sure that I fully understand what we can ask of them. So what they came, the terms that they came to us with at first were less than what we're bringing in now. So, the current lease is for $26,278.92 annually, so that, that's around 20, just under $22 a month. When they came to us, they basically explained that as technology needs are shifting and carriers are reviewing network efficiency, their optimization, and then consolidation and cost reductions. The lease renewal terms that they put in place in 2004 are not necessarily working for them anymore. And so while the initial lease proposal included a monthly lease amount, so when they first came to me, their proposal was a less than what we are receiving now. And so I was just kind of doing some, I guess, my homework. And what we were running up against is if they pull the lease completely, if they kind of pack their toys and go home, then we receive no funding. So I was trying to kind of figure out, I didn't want us to pay less than. So what we have agreed upon is an extension of the lease as it currently sits. So, no longer getting the decreased amount. It'll be 21,000, I'm sorry, 2,100 for four years with a 3% increase at the beginning of the next, of each extended five-year term. The lease also includes, and this is the other difference, a provision to allow the tenant to modify and/or replace equipment in order to be in compliance with current or future federal, state, or local mandated applications, including but not limited to emergency 911 services. The consideration of these terms is the first step in a ground lease renewal. If passed today, a full lease amendment would come before you in the future that our city attorney would review.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Well done, Ms. Van Vleek. Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. 3825.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Well, we're at the communications portion. We made it.
Councilmember Black.
Okay.
Committee for Engagement and Transparency is working on a comprehensive survey to see how residents would like to receive communications. More to follow because we did not have a meeting this month.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, the Tree Board will meet Tuesday, May 27th at 7:00 PM at the Public Safety Conference Room. The Zoning Board of Appeals still has no upcoming meetings. That's been an unusual dry spell. And then, this weekend, I was able to attend the Michigan Municipal League Summit on Leadership. And if you haven't taken that yet, I strongly recommend it. It's a lot of really good sessions in it. And also wasn't expecting this, but was given the chance to speak at it on, about our early look at the MML's Thriving Communities Framework and how it might benefit us. From these events, I usually try and take one action item and, you know, for me personally, you know, I find, you know, I'm very good at the analytical, but not the emotional sometimes. And, you know, to be a better communicator, I, you know, not to, need to not just share facts, but, you know, the why it matters. And so, you know, I'm, the takeaway from this leadership training for me is going to be to continue to work on that part. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Hey, that's me. Thank you. Historical Committee met last week's Tuesday, the 13th, and happy Berkeley History Month, everybody. Please come visit the museum. They've, they're receiving a terrific collection of Berkeley High School band uniforms, including like a, like a, I don't know what, a mannequin fully, you know, standing there with the outfit on. It's fantastic. And coming up soon will be a Berkeley-wide scavenger hunt, scheduled to run from July 1st to August 31st. More information coming on that, but there'll be some great prizes. And for more information, visit BerkeleyHistory.com. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, met the very next day in the morning of the 14th. There'd be a Dorothea Pocket Park Project Pilot Program, lots of P's there for everybody, coming up June 14th to July 19th. So basically, we'll close off that street, activate it with some really fun events and activities. It's a longstanding item in our master plan as a community, to find new ways to have that be a lot of fun. Really excited about that. And speaking of the MML, they'll be helping coordinate a walking tour on the west end of 12 Mile later in June to help identify additional placemaking opportunities there. For more information on all that cool stuff and upcoming events, please visit DowntownBerkeley.com. And finally, it was Malcolm X who once said, "We need more light about each other." Light creates understanding. Understanding creates love. Love creates patience, and patience creates unity. Sure need a lot of that. Malcolm was born on this very day in 1925. Other notable birthdays today include Grace Jones and Andre the Giant, who was my favorite wrestler growing up. Today is also National Plant Something Day, World Family Doctor Day, Frog Jumping Jubilee Day, I know you're all in that, Celebrate Your Elected Officials Day. It's a real thing and that's today as well. And speaking of celebrating your local officials, I would like to celebrate Honorable Clarence Black, his service to Berkeley and to our community. You've been inspirational leader here in this body and such a great representative across the city and the region, and of course the amazing things that you do. So thank you so much. And wish you safe travels and a smooth deployment and a happily uneventful return home. And so with that, thanks, everybody. Please hug somebody you love. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Very briefly, tonight, Parks and Rec will meet on June 12th at 7:00 PM at the community center, and the Library Board is going to meet this week on the 21st at 7:00 PM at the library.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Perhaps you missed Flower Day at Eastern Market, but have no fear because the Environmental Advisory Committee is having a native plant sale on June 1st at our own community center from 10 to 2, so come and stock up on your native plants. The Berkeley Area Chamber has a Chamber Chat coming up with the Royal Oak Leprechauns on Coolidge at 8:30 AM on June 20th, so it's open to all to attend. Coming up in just a few weeks is the Berkeley Art Bash, and so you can come check out everything and then also get your start on voting for the Berkeley Has Heart Photography Contest. And then a month after that, we have the Street Art Festival on July 12th, and there's still time to sign up for chalk artists. And then last but not least, thank you to Clarence. You are not just my colleague, but you are my friend, and really appreciate all that you've done here on council and what you're doing for our country. My prayers will be with you, but truly mostly with Lorena because she deserves them. And I am holding your lasagna hostage until you come back to us safely.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Van Vleek?
First, I'm going to do a little plug for the DDA, Jennifer back there. They're looking for volunteers for our various committees. So those include Business Improvement, Design, Organization and Development, Marketing and Promotion. So really, anyone that's part of the city and a shareholder here in the city can volunteer. So if you'd like to, reach out to Jennifer Finney. In addition, I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update on our Human Resources function. So our Human Resources Director has been hard at work. So we've had quite a few positions that are all just to, just to make note, infill positions. So there's been a lot of movement, whether it's been retirements or people leaving or people moving up in the organization that's created some fills, and it's also seasonal hiring time. So she came in just during the thick of that, so she's been, she's been trying to, working with the departments to fill a lot of those. And then also, we have open enrollment, so this is the time to make your healthcare changes. And open enrollment for us is the end of June, so we've been working hard on that as well. So she's been a fantastic addition and we're thankful that she's here, and we're thankful that that function is here. It's done wonders for the organization. And Councilmember Baker already mentioned it, but we are working hard on the Dorothea Pilot Pocket Park. The Committee has decided that the, I'm sorry, that the timeline will be June 18th roughly through July 19th. So you'll see the closure of that street and around, on Street Art, I'm sorry, not on Street Art Fest, Art Bash, because DPW will be out. And the way that we're closing down the road requires some lifting, some heavy things, so they'll close the road down that weekend. Then we'll have some volunteers in the beginning of the week really designing that space. And we're actually utilizing some, some young volunteers of our summer camp and they'll be painting around June 18th, and we'll do a little bit of a soft opening. There will be more information on this, but there will be a soft opening that comes and then also a kickoff that's looking like Saturday, the 21st. And we're also looking for anyone who has any crazy ideas on how we could use this space. If you have an idea that you think is just really out there, please, we want to hear all of the ideas. So reach out to us. You can email myself. You can email the CMO's office. You can call us. And also musicians. We're looking, I think musicians are, we've talked about how musicians are a great way to activate a space and really bring people to a space. So if you are a musician or you know of one who would like some FaceTime, please reach out to us.
Thank you. Attorney Crist?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. One item, the city's last Michigan tax tribunal matter was resolved last week. It was a situation segueing from the budget where the property owner was seeking approximately $500,000 reduction in taxable value, a significant amount. And it was resolved for a much more modest figure in consultation in coordination with Oakland County equalization. So that is resolved and there's no longer any current pending Michigan tax tribunal matters.
Thank you. Appreciate that update. So as a member of the Board of Trustees for the Michigan Municipal League Workers' Comp Fund, I attended the National League of Cities Risk Conference in Clearwater, Florida last week. Yes, I did enjoy the weather for the day and a half that I got there early, and then I was basically in, you know, conference rooms. My husband, though, enjoyed all the days. I joined my counterparts from all over the U.S. to learn and exchange ideas and basically good governance. I spent a lot of time with actuaries and accountants and attorneys and all just, you know, helping me, excuse me, to expand and grow in my role and to be a good steward of this responsibility that I was elected to do. And I just wanted to thank the Michigan Municipal League for that opportunity. I wanted to address Councilmember Patterson's absence this evening. He is in Port Huron with his mother, who is currently in ICU. She's stable and expects to be coming home in a few days, but I just wanted to point out that that's why he wasn't here and, you know, we offer continued prayers for her recovery and hopefully it'll be sooner rather than later. And Councilmember Black, you earlier referenced doing hard things. And I just, you know, you've done hard things and I know you know that, so you know you can do hard things and you do them successfully. And this will be another hard thing that you will do, and you will do it successfully. And I appreciate your service, not only to the United States, but to this community and your contributions to this council. So it's, see you later, but not goodbye. And, you know, we'll spend some time before you go, and we need to do a little exchange. And with that, I would like a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Valani with support from Councilmember Black.